To be aware, there is diseases out there. How well are we doing as a public health to point that out? I don't know. It's yet to be determined. Vaccinations for young families. We have a lot of injured people in this community. Probably a higher level of Medicaid than, I don't know, a lot of the counties. So there's a lot of education through, through vaccinations that would apply. And then I wonder, my mind wanders, you know, what happens if we're facing in our, in our county that the public health officer might look at, you know, to all our employees, people that are employed by mines, you know, are they getting protection that they need? Are they safe in the job? Are they aware of the chemicals and dangers that they might face there? Not saying that's where the public health officer should go, but it'd be nice if, if we work together with some of these big employers to try to, try to help. Non, you know, drug use, of course, is on the rise everywhere, including our county. That, that would be a huge, huge goal. When I was a kid, it was dare, you know, dare to keep kids off drugs, regular and weak, things of that nature. Schools would love to do more of that. There's not a lot of funds for that. They're tight too. But maybe at the public health office, we have a little extra funds and, you know, we can do something, draw a answer to the junior high, do some fun and things, you know, dare to keep kids off drugs. So there's, there's a lot of options I think we can go. The mere fact that it's so overwhelming is that we've never done them. From what I've seen in the six years I've lived here, from not being public health wise, it's rarely occurred until this pandemic. I've worked closely with county health nurses, quite a lot, had a few nurses over the last few years, and they do wonderful work. I'm not criticizing them, but they probably just could use a little more direction as well, things I could do, because, you know, they're good people, you know. Your current nurse, Shannon, she's a great energetic individual, but it would be fun to get out in schools and talking to kids and doing some education. So I, I think there's more to be done here.
Excellent. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you. I did have some questions, but through the discussion, those have been answered. So I just appreciate you putting in your application.
Again.
I just had a statement that's actually for the benefit of all the applicants, and that is that I think our culture today, particularly my generation unfortunately, has been, they don't like criticism, but criticism is not a negative thing. Criticism is how we learn. Criticism is how we grow. And so anybody that we bring on board is going to have to put up with criticism because that's what we're going to do. And, and I wanted to say, Richard actually has touched on it many times, but I want to make it even more clear, Dr. Beyond is a good dude, and I felt really bad that people really savaged his reputation by claiming that he would, he quit because he couldn't take the criticism. He's a way better man than that, and that's absurd that he, that that was his reasoning. He had some serious reasons that he had to do what he did. But anybody in this position is going to have to take some criticism because that's, that's the game. That doesn't mean it's personal. It just means we're dressed, let it out, and we're going to come to a conclusion.
And sometimes it's in the delivery is how it's accepted.
I would agree with that. Delivery is key as an employee, employer relationship, was, but has HR experience. You can probably tell it better than I can, but it's in how you deliver that message and the way to deliver that message. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Welcome, Mr. Robertson to come forward if you would.
Morning.
Welcome. Elizabeth will be taking questions.
Yeah, I'll ask the questions, and again, I ask you to direct the responses to the county commission. Okay? Tell us about your background, education, and qualifications to be the White Pine County Public Health Officer.
Yeah, my background, as many of you know, I was raised here, family has been here, multi-generational, you know, the five generations in this town and county. And it's a great love of mine, and I'm excited to be back. I had been gone for a while for school and everything like that, but back and here to stay in this place where I can see myself staying for good and raising my kids here in non-advantageous. In my education, I'm trained doctor of optometry, did graduate school down in Southern California, Southern California College of Optometry. Did residencies and clinical patients in different ocular disease sites at hospitals in Oklahoma, working clinics in Seattle and Hawaii. And I've been out of school for about three and a half years now. And yeah, so that's mainly my education and background.
Thank you. Describe what you believe would be the main priorities or objectives of the White Pine County Public Health Officer.
Yeah, so the main objectives that I would have is to work with a lot of the groups and organizations that are, especially in, in our current situation, trying to maintain the economy and keep businesses open and tourism coming in, to be able to work with these groups to do these types of activities safely, to work with them, to give recommendations, to maintain being as open and productive as can. Because like we were saying, we don't, no one wants us to shut down. And I, and I believe that with, you know, proper care and some adjustments to the way some of these large activities, recreational and business-wise are done, we can continue to keep doing that. And so I kind of see that as my goal as the county health officers, to make sure we can get through this kind of struggling portion we're through, staying as open as we can and as safely as we can.
Have you proposed to balance the medical needs with other public needs during the course of the pandemic?
Yeah, that is a challenging balance. And a lot of it just has to come down to making some adjustments to the way we do things and being able to still continue to do them. For example, I've been in meetings with the Great Basin Trail Alliance as we prepare for this upcoming mountain bike race that we do every year, the Beers and Tiers. And it's something that is a wonderful activity. It's great for the economy. It gives people coming in, and it gets the word of Eli, you know, out to the, you know, surrounding areas as a place to come. And it's still an activity that we certainly can do safely, and it's a matter of making some adjustments. You know, we've talked about how to keep the volunteers safe and how this kind of spread out the racers a little bit. And there's, you know, same thing with any other of these kind of activities and businesses that we're trying to work with. I don't think it, you know, requires a total shutdown or, you know, cancellation of all these things. It just takes some adjustments and some tweaks that we can continue to do them, but do them safely and make sure that we keep ourselves as protected as possible.
What resources do you anticipate you will need to perform your job during the term of the pandemic and beyond?
Yeah, I agree that education is key. And I don't think that necessarily takes a large amount of resources to do, especially in kind of a smaller tight-knit community like we have. A matter of, you know, working with school officials and I think, you know, things that would actually cost some money that would be of great benefit are, you know, making sure that we have, you know, a lot of hand washing or hand sanitation stations around town, you know, investing, you know, disposable masks that, you know, we can have at different county or city buildings or in businesses kind of access to. But I think the, the science and the record has shown that hand sanitation and wearing of masks are very effective. And if we can get the city and county unified a little more in doing that, it can have great benefits for us now and in the future.
And what is your expectation of the public health board during the term of the pandemic and then beyond?
Yeah, it's working in unison with the county commissions, where I see if we can work together to where we can present a type of unified front for now and going forward with the challenges we'll continue to face once we kind of get past this at some point, is what it takes for any kind of leadership position. And it's one that I hope to be able to foster, is working together, coming to an agreement with the whole county health board and being able to lessen the, maybe confusion of maybe the general population. It's harder when you get so many conflicting messages from your own leadership, you know, with people, it creates divisions in the community. And I think it's an opportunity that we have to work together and hopefully get us more unified as a community and as a county to work together.
Thank you. And I'd like to invite the county commission to ask any follow-up questions, or do you have any further county commission please?
Just to be fair, I'd just like to repeat my, the question I have for Mr. Coons. Is, is the pandemic aside, once we've gone over that hurdle, what do you see as our priorities going forward?
Something that I'm very passionate about, and I believe in lieu of a, you know, a major pandemic like this, would be very beneficial in the realm of public health, is increasing health through activity. You know, as obviously we all know, Eli is a bit of a hub for outdoors activity, mountain biking and hiking, and is getting known more and more around the area as a destination spot. And I feel like improving education, physical education and activity and getting that more involved in the community and our youth and adult populations would raise the overall health of the community as a whole. And I think that would be something for me personally, with something that would I would see me pushing, you know, once we're kind of past this, being able to improve, you know, health through outdoor activity, physical education, activities and groups and things like that to, within the community, improve that as more and more tourism from outside is coming in and looking for that. That is us economically and says in the public health plan as well.
Thank you. You want to? Thank you very much for taking the time and allowing us to interview you. We're really looking forward to selecting a candidate.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That was item two, so we conducted the interviews, and we'll go on to item three. Item three on page two is discussion for possible action, approval to appoint a public health officer based on the interview that is specified rate for Nevada declared state of emergency for the COVID-19 pandemic and an alternate rate thereafter effective on the specific date. So Elizabeth, why don't you give us a little background on, we've discussed how much we want to pay, and can you kind of give us a little background of where we're at?
Yes. Okay, so one of the things that's come up as a concern is that what we were paying our prior public health officer, just it was not going to be adequate because the time and dedication required during this state of emergency has been much higher than was previously needed. And so one of the things we have to understand very clearly as we do this is if we go ahead and we propose a rate, the rate cannot be, be dependent on a federal funding source being available. So if you elect to pay X amount of dollars during the term of the pandemic, and the pandemic is not over effective as of December 30th, and our CARES Act funding goes away, we will continue to pay that amount from our general fund. And we'll have to take that out of contingency in order to make that happen. And then did you want an alternate rate after the term of the pandemic is over, there's no longer a declared emergency in the state of Nevada, and we put this person, the, the public health officer, to a certain rate of pay thereafter that's more consistent with the, lessen the obligation of their job duties? So one of the things that we have as another agenda item later is talking about having a temporary mentor for our new public health officer that kind of helps bridge that gap and get them up to speed. So if you want to do a rate that's higher than what we've been paying, which would be appropriate to recognize the time, I would encourage you to do a tiered rate, one that says if there's a declared state emergency pay as X per month, and if there's not, it's Y per month. And then have that based on outside objective criteria of a state of emergency.
I think that we should discuss what, what we think a rate should be, but also, as we move forward, this just came into my head as we were reading, is we have the two candidates here, and whatever rate of pay we come up to, I think it's important for them to, to be able to say, I'll work for that amount of money because...
Well, when you make the appointment, they still have to accept.
Yes. So, but anyway, I just bringing that up because it came to me, I think around this commission, we've kind of come up with a solid number to pay for what it's worth, especially during this time. But we want to also make sure that, like you said, when we sit down with them, can we appoint one of the officers today, and then he says, no, can we do a, make an appointment and an alternate?
No. So we make the appointment and tell them what the rate's going to be, and they'll simply accept. Now, you have discussed in this, before what those rates would look like, and so we're just trying to get it formalized that, that higher rate that you had discussed was during the pandemic, it won't expire on December 31st. It has to be with or, was have to carry a contingency after December, after January 1st, so make sure that's clear. I mean, maybe they'll extend the CARES Act or do something, but we can't expect reimbursement if the pandemic goes beyond January 1st, not to pay that rate. And then just come up with a subsequent, a secondary lower rate when it's like we had discussed with Commissioner Bybee, with some of the applicants, when you're just doing education and other reporting and changing some, you know, policies and such.
Okay, just to get the ball rolling to make, to make it, I think the, the rate, what we can do, and then I'm going to ask all the commissions, just because I say something doesn't make an offense. I think we should go with around $4,000 per month that will set us through this pandemic. And then in the future, once the pandemic is gone, the $4,000, we have the COVID money to help us cover that, so that's, that's a good thing. And it's definitely going to be paying what we, what that person is going to be giving to us based on all the hours that are put in. And then, but hopefully the pandemic ends, and then if we go forward, the previous public health officer was only getting $100 a month, and we make it $400 a month after that for his, whatever the hours are, and we go that route, we kind of come up with something. But just to, just to kind of get the ball rolling, I'd like to throw out a $4,000 a month figure through the 30, through the pandemic, and once the pandemic's gone, I would suggest maybe a $400 per month fee because that's, I mean, I'm just throwing a number out there. You guys help me along here. If I'm right, I'm right. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. But that, that, I think the $4,000 with the hours that are put in, and Dr. Beyond, what he did, is sufficient, but that's my opinion. I just got the ball started.
Thank you. I think in our last couple of meetings, we've discussed part of it. I remember now.
So that's my...
We landed, I think, at 100 grand per home.
No, I think it was...
Was it?
The first time we had this, we had discussed that, what you're talking about at the end.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then we, the last meeting, about $5,000 a month. There's probably significant work to do when there's not a pandemic, I think, to get for a while, just consider that we still have ordinances and regulations where we have to revisit and make sure we're in a good place and good shape to handle this kind of government emergency, you know, because part of this is dealing with our state government.
And then the other thing to consider is, is where we're at right now, or where we were before the pandemic started, where you want to be with your public health officer and the services granted to your community, or do you want to see that increase? That's another consideration.
I was going to say, we, so aside from, from the pandemic numbers, probably around 15,000 a year was more like what I was thinking. I don't know, I'm just spitballing, but just in terms of if we wanted to step up our game and have them actually putting some effort and some hours into expanding the public health, that kind of salary is more indicative of a partial part-time, plus put some effort into it rather than just a token amount.
And I think the other thing we really, really have to be aware of is our budget going into next year and how, how much we can really afford to continue on and on and on. So I just, is your 15,000 per year, or what was that?
Yeah, yeah, per year.
Per year, so starting now?
No, meaning to when we get out of the pandemic, when the pandemic is over, November, we start paying something that's, I would just say that's, that's moderately reasonable to inspire someone to put some effort into it. They're earning enough money that I'm hoping that they'll feel the motivation and then feel properly compensated for putting like what Shane was talking about, but implementing some other priorities. So that's the balance we have. I'm just pulling 15,000 out of the year, but the balance we got to have is we, what we don't want is what we had before, which was a minimally, you know, what do we call it, the token payment, where that's really not enough. They, they, these are high-level professionals, and they have, they're already busy enough. We want to make sure that it's valuable to them to cut out some of that time and dedicate it to our public health section.
Travis, you got anything?
Yeah, I kind of, I think we kind of discussed last meeting here, in my recollection, it was like 5,000 a month for the pandemic. And then after that, yeah, like, it's kind of, you know, definitely needs to be more than it was before. We have what, exact, 15 or 10 or, you know, something, I think something in the average for after pandemic.
Shane and Lori, you guys got an opinion on how much?
I'm comfortable with where we're at, the 5,000. And then the figure that popped into my head was, was that, that was 1,000 a month.
That's kind of...
I mean, as a, a thousand percent increase of what we were doing, but let's face it, basically, we were asking for a volunteer and giving them a telephone. And I think, and I'm, I'm comfortable with 15,000, I'm comfortable with 12,000. 12,000 was just the figure that popped into my head.
And I, I agree with that.
Yeah, that's, that's why I said it was more. Yeah, I'm comfortable with the 5,000 and 15.
Okay. I think the consensus, I'm just trying to get this to a vote, okay? Let me see if I can get a motion to pay $5,000 per month through the pandemic and 12,000 using your number, I'm just going to use that. You said 15, he said 10. So he said 10, so 12. So my suggestion, I'll ask for a motion to set the salary at $5,000 per month during the pandemic, and after the pandemic, to make it $1,000 a month or $12,000 a year. Can I get a motion for that?
Move to approve.
Okay, motion by Travis.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So I think that's the direction we're going to be at. So right now, I am, we're still on page two, and it says here the chairman, I'll recess the Regent County...
No, we need to, we need to get some other position.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I got a little carted for the horse. Thank you very much. So we both listened to the two candidates in the interviews. I, I personally graded them as I went by. Does any commissioner have a preference of which of the two candidates they'd like to nominate to be the public health officer?
I think I'll be, I'd like to move for Darren Coons. I think him being plugged into the hospital already is a great step forward, and he'll hit the ground running, and I think it's good to have someone with some pharmacy background. You know, I think a lot of these hydrochloriquin and zinc and all these type of stuff is really going to get a lot more important as this moves forward. I think he's just better positioned and can get things in place faster and we can see better results in a shorter amount of time, which is what we really, really need. So that's, I'll, I'll move to, for Mr. Coons.
I second that. And I also, I also think that maybe he has a little bit more rounded overall experience that we would benefit from.
We have a motion by Travis and a second by Lori to appoint Darren B. Coons as the public health officer. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Passionate, Mr. Coons is our appointee. So now, we are going to recess the Regent County Commission meeting and convene the special board of public health. I guess that's the meeting here.
Nope, it's Darren Coons. It's the chairman of the public health.
He's being called, I think.
Yeah. You poke around, see if you can get him.
I don't know if he, if either one of them understood that he would go into this. So I think that...
No, I mean, that's fine. There's, here's the thing, go ahead and call chairman, because there's nothing to write about.
Yeah.
So, I can do it? Okay. We are now opening the board of public health for public comment. Is there any public comment in place on the phone? Anybody on the phone with any counsel comment on what we've done during the public health meeting? Anybody in the building? George, do you have anything to say in public comment for the public health?
We went from $50 to 15. Those in enforcement should pay the brunt of this, not the taxpayer.
What's going on up there? Is this your public comment, just from a distance?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm unhappy with you guys.
Okay, hearing none, we're going to go into the regular meeting, and item one during the public board, board of public health is discussion for possible action, approval to ratify the orders from the Office of the Board of Public Health for White Pine County.
There aren't any, no other orders, so no motion necessary. That's it.
Okay.
And, and maybe with this said, we should go ahead and get with Governor Coons to be, to be sure when we should have our next, because having that discussion with him, I mean, things are changing so fast, so that we're ready, really ready for a meeting. And if he does have anything to bring forward, so we need to be sure that we go that route. So he, we, we are all on the same page.
I think we should have Dr. Coons come on the next agenda, and he can, in the meantime, direct the district attorney to sit down with him and...
Yeah, I guess there's not much, I mean, there's nothing on the agenda, but...
Hey, just did it. It's over.
Oh, yeah, it's over? Good.
So now, I'll direct the district attorney's office to meet with Dr. Coons, to give him the specifics as far as his hour goes, make sure he's on board, bring him back in here at the next meeting, and we can give his acceptance and, and have a agenda for that? Can I, can I?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. With that being said, I'll, if there's nothing else here, I'm going to ask for a public comment in the board of public health. Is there any public comment on the phone? Is there any in the building? Hearing none and seeing none, I will recess the, close the public health board meeting and reopen the county commission meeting, and we're just about to the 9:45, and I think we can get you in, Bill. Or you want to take a break? You guys want to take a break? If you have to...
We're past the 9:45.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute break, and we'll come back to the 9:45. Is that okay? Let's do that. And we are at it, we're a little behind, as I was informed, so we're going to the 9:30 AM, wait, excuse me, 9:45 on page two, item D, road commission discussion update on primary and secondary roads within White Pine County and county facilities completed and future projects, communications with corporations and government entities. Bill, call the...
Good morning.
Morning, Bill.
Good morning.
Yeah.
We're awake. These road maintenance activities are between the dates of July 13th and August 13th. Roads receiving maintenance are at Kinley, Ruby Valley, Shellburn, Spring Valley, Stonehouse, Poe, and Pinwheel. Additional duties, we did some, replaced some delineators on the Cave Lake Road. We mowed cherry prick ivory now for the second time. We are continuing to work in the Sandy Springs pit on Indian Summit. There were some old asphalt products there that I'm not sure how they got there, or they've probably been there forever, but it's still our responsibility, it's our pit, so we went ahead and cleaned it all up. We got a request from Tim Paris to do some mowing at the airport, we accomplished that. We had a cattle yard re-clean in Pleasant Valley. We did our annual ANH R refresher because of the ass required, because we need work inside gravel pits. We completed that. Currently, we're screening material in the tailored cutoff gravel pit. We had to take one of our trucks to Salt Lake that has some transmission issues, so we just haul that in ourselves. we just haul that in ourselves, that kind of specialty work. We had a request from the McGill Town Council to replace and or straighten some signage in McGill, we accomplished that. We work with the city of Ely, so now we've got...